Okay, today is Tuesday, February 23rd, 2021. I call the village board meeting order. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Zarnik.
Here.
Trustee Fechter.
Here.
Trustee Frankie.
Here.
Trustee Lister.
Here.
Trustee Prackno.
Here.
Trustee Schmidt.
Here. All board members are present tonight. We do not have an invocation, but we will do the pledge allegiance. Could everyone please stand? The flag is to my right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated. Can I apologize for the late start of the meeting? May the approval of the minutes of February 9th, 2021?
I move we accept the minutes of February 9th, 2021 in dispense with the reading.
Second, motion by trustee Zarnik is second by trustee Lister. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, let the record show no ass approval. Mayor and trustees report tonight. Just a couple lines before we do some swearing ends. On February 18th, I had opportunity to do a podcast with the Sports Business Journal. Podcast was talking about, working with Dan from Forefront, talking about the sponsorship of the Olympic teams we're working on this year. Track and field, wrestling, and triathlon. And it went very well. It was like a 30, 35 minute podcast. And it was great to get opportunity to talk about Elk Grove, our virtues, and our community, and makers want it, to the people that tune into it. So we're excited about that. Also, on the 18th, same day, I met with a young lady from Elk Grove High School. Stephanie Holgren de Galeri, who's a senior at Elk Grove High School. And she's running for Student of the Year and for the Leukemia Lymphoma Society. She's out raising money for that worthy cause. And her efforts to bring money to help fight and find a cure for the cancer. And what a great young lady. I'm telling you something, when you meet these people from our schools, this village is in great shape in the future, trust me. Boy, she could be mayor someday, easily. Fine girl. So if you can, go on our website, elk Grove.org. Click on it. We'll tell you how you can donate to her. And again, she's trying to raise the money. She wants to be the winner of the year, student of the year out of it. It's a seven week campaign. I think it ends March 13th, his last day. So Elk Grove, we've always stepped up before. If you can, step up, help Stephanie, help raise money for a good cause, and also show what a great community Elk Grove is. Also, did we add, what else did, oh, today, yesterday, had a chance to go to the enclave. I met with a delegation, the mayor of Kenosha, Wisconsin, and his delegation, they're looking to kind of use the enclave, a hybrid of the enclave, up there. They're doing a lot of work up there. And if anyone remembers Kenosha, remember what happened last summer in Kenosha? That is very interesting and, you know, you think you have a tough job as mayor sometimes, until you go through something like that, mayor had to go through. And he handled it very well, did a fine job. And it was a very interesting time to talk to him and hear his perspective of things going on. But what a beautiful city Kenosha is, on Lakefront there and everything. And they got Carthage College, they had, I think, University of Wisconsin, was it Parkside? Where's Ray? Was it Parkside? Yeah, they got that there. So they got some good colleges right there. It's a nice location. So it was nice to meet with a fellow mayor. They're doing some projects, some district areas, some work going on. And it's good to talk about what we do tiff-wise, what they're doing. So it was very good to work with them and talk to them about things. Why I want to talk next, and I see Helen here, kind of a COVID update. I know people talk about COVID all the time. It's an issue obviously here for a long time, it's gonna be here for a while. Couple things to clear people's minds of. I know a lot of people said, I got calls, like Kevin called me, said, "Mayor, I read in the paper Addison put together a COVID shot vaccination location." I think Bensonville's done it, Elgin, I think, is doing it. Remember, how the vaccines work in Illinois is, they go to the state. The state then delegates out to the counties. That's where the decisions are made, who gets it, how it's being spread out, how shots are given, the counties. Local towns do not have jurisdiction over it. We have been meeting with, talking, going conference calls, Zoom meetings, everything in the world, with county, with state, federal officials, all that. If we could do a vaccination center here, we'd do it in a second. We've already talked something to the high school, we could easily have a location, we can get it done. The reason a lot of these other towns are getting is, a lot of the state's emphasis on getting shots out is based on communities, based on their minority populations. The larger minority population you have, the better chance you have of getting COVID because they're trying to get it into that group of folks because they have not been receiving at the same level as other people have. So if you look at the makeup of Elk Grove, of Schaumburg, Arlington Heights, towns around here, that's why you haven't seen vaccination shots going there. The makeup of Addison, Bensonville, Elgin, that's why the counties have been putting them in those locations, because of the minority makeup of the population of those communities. So we would like to get them, we want to get them, and when the opportunity arises, we'll be more than happy to administer them, to set locations, get them done. So it's not that local communities are not trying, it's just there's a very limited supply of shots and very limited places to administer them. And right now, they, we're not eligible to do it. But again, this board, we all would like to get them done, we all like to get them out there, get them done. So again, we're telling everyone, keep going on the county website, keep going on Walgreens, keep going on Osco, keep going to all the places, keep trying, don't just do it once, do every day, do it at night. I read in the paper today, a story, a young man who's 14 years old, who's helped 100 seniors by him going on the computer forum to find him shot locations. So I know it's a pain, I know it's not easy, but keep going. Now, the good news, as you follow, the numbers of COVID patients are dropping, the transmissions are dropping, the deaths are dropping, and as you look around, it's people are wearing masks, people are being careful. So that is working, and there's, there are a lot of people that have got shots. I think in Illinois, I think close to what, 2 million people have gotten shots already. So that reduces the number of people that can give it. Also, people have had COVID. When you have COVID, for I think, three to five months, you cannot transfer. So all that's working together. And my own family, my one daughter who's pregnant, she just got COVID. And her husband, and my grandson, they all had it, you know? They're isolated, they're doing fine. So I mean, it's out there, people are getting it, it's happening. But again, be safe, wear masks, distance, we're distance up here. You know, when we stop here, we all put our mask on, everyone. So if you do that, you can minimize the impact of it. That's why I think numbers are dropping. But we're getting a lot of people that have gotten shots or gotten, already had COVID, and that's why I think you're seeing some of the numbers drop. And it will get better as time goes on. But please, I know it's not easy to say this, but be patient, be patient. But we're trying everything we can as a village, as all my fellow mayors are doing and board members are doing. If we get it, we will. But until then, be safe, but please, keep going on those computers and checking to get it in those other places. Another thing real quick, Kobe, where's Kobe? A-plus job, let's give a hand to Public Works going through the storms. I think our guys worked from that one Saturday until like Wednesday or Thursday, nonstop last week. It kills you because it's not a snow that comes for two hours and is done. It just keeps going and going and going and going. And I tell you, Kobe, let you guys know, kudos from this village. I know it's not been easy, but you know what? Once snow stops, within an hour or two, we're down to pavement. You guys do a phenomenal job, thank you. Especially this late in the year, it's not easy. So we appreciate that. One thing too, people I know have been asking, and we are trying a new technique, not just salt, it's called beet heat. No, it's not beet juice, but it's called beet heat. It's actually made up of carbohydrates and some other synthetics. And it's very effective in what we had last week, very cold weather. What, 15 degrees or below is most effective? Yeah. So 15 degrees or below, like we had last week, you know, as kids, we always heard the rumor, it's too cold as snow, that's not true. We found that out last week, it was below zero, and it was snowing like crazy. So beet heat is more effective. Salt needs a little warmer temperature to be more effective. Beet heat does not. So we're working with different things, we've been testing things. Kobe, thank you for trying new ideas, new things, and we've been doing a lot of the main arteries with this, and so far, we've been good, like the results we're getting. So you may see some changes coming, and it's what, 95% biodegradable?
Yes.
So unlike salt, it won't burn the grass, it's not bad for the environment, it's very good. So we're constantly looking for new ideas. You just started using that, what, about February 3rd or 4th?
Yeah, something like that.
Yeah. So we just started using this, it's brand new to us, and we've had good results with it, so that's good. Also, people with COVID, the secretary has gotten an order, Secretary of State's office, if your driver's license expired or your ID expired, you're good on the old one till June 1st. They extended, I know a couple seniors asking about it. You don't have to rush in there, relax, till June 1st to get your new updated license or ID. So if yours expired, you cannot get a ticket. So Chuck, where's Chuck Wallace? Sorry, no tickets on that, sorry, gotta be good. So you got to June 1st on that. Also, some real good news, Alexian Brothers Hospital, our hospital, our beloved hospital, was ranked in the top 50 of all hospitals in the United States. I'm gonna repeat, ranked in the top 50 of all hospitals in the United States. And take from Mr. Knickerbocker, myself, we had bypass surgery there, and I've had other shoulder, other surgeries, they are phenomenal. And it makes us so proud to see him getting ranked that well. So actually, let me look here, that is put out by the health, by Health Grades, who does this on annual basis, checking, and they go very in-depth, they look at admissions, what do you call when you get out of hospital? Not departures.
Discharges.
Discharges, thank you. Admissions, discharged, surgeries, quality of surgeries, you know, all the stuff that goes good and bad, and Alexian Brothers. So that can't be prouder of the people. And a lot of people in Elk Grove work at the hospital, and you know what's great about it? It's two minutes from our homes. And that's what's phenomenal. We got the best right in our backyard, we love that. Also, I want to offer an apology to this community. Last week, we had the snowstorm that hit Monday and Tuesday. Our garbage pickup is done by Waste Management. They are supposed to send out a robocall any time the garbage is delayed. Unfortunately, this is not the first time this year they haven't done the robocall. I got my great robocall the night after they're supposed to pick up my garbage. Didn't do much good by that point, but anyways, to say we're disappointed is an understatement. Great people work for Waste Management. Everyone knows the garbage man. They're good guys, good women, they do a great job. Management fell down big time. I know they're gonna say they slipped on the ice or whatever, but this is not the first time, we passed the first time. This second time ended a few weeks. So neither say we're not happy, the good news, their contract's up this October. We're remembering that, and we're going out for bid. And we'll see what's out there. We do have a nice waste hall right in Elk Grove, Groot, and there's other ones out there. So we are gonna be rebidding our Waste Management contract, not only for price, but also following through on areas they should, like letting residents know when it's zero degrees, don't bring your garbage out, have to bring it back up and then bring it back out again, and they don't call or tell you that. We weren't happy about that. Also, anyone that watched TV on February 13th, we put a little notice out, for the track meet, there was an NBC show nationally, you can't help but take a lot of pride in Elk Grove Village. We were all over that track field, our signages, our commercials on TV, they talked about Elk Grove, very proud. And that was two hours, nationwide coverage, and think about it, that was, day was five below zero, you're not outside doing too much, obviously not taking your garbage out. And so what'd you have to do? Got to watch TV, what you got to watch? People love sports, got to watch Elk Grove. And we cannot thank them enough, that was part of our sponsorship with the national teams, we sponsor track and field, we sponsor triathlon, we sponsor wrestling, and we thank NBC, they went above and beyond what we ever expected them to do. And we thank them for that kind of coverage nationwide. Remember how successful our off-the-wall kind of advertising, without the Bombers Bowl, we'd be having Loves coming to this village. We don't have Loves coming to the village, we don't get a million dollars a year in sales tax for 20 years. So that went very well. Hopefully, the next business, watch the track meet, when we contact them very soon. Also, just to let everybody know, we have a budget hearing coming up in March, the 3rd Tuesday in March, we have a budget hearing coming up. And like I say, everyone's going through things with the pandemic and all that, the village is doing well, and, you know, we did better than we expected. And so that's good news. So we'll be talking more after the budget hearing on that. And then also, I know we've been talking a long time, but we're letting the board know, the first meeting in April, we plan on presenting our long-term road maintenance rehabilitation program. Our second meeting in April, we're gonna be talking about a long-awaited drainage, both front and rear yard, sidewalks included, program. Then we'll be talking about more questions, any more information, 1st May. And by the 2nd meeting in May, we're looking at how we're gonna fund this project, because this is an ongoing project that's gonna be going on for 20, 30, 40 years. So we're gonna show how we're gonna fund it, and don't worry, we're not raising taxes by thousands of dollars or anything like that, it's gonna be very affordable. But we are gonna be looking at funding to make sure we can do this. And this is what no different lot of towns around us are doing. I think Schaumburg just passed, Mr. Rumm, $180 million, that's $180 million funding for their long-term roadway projects and other improvements that way. Every town around here is about the same age, 60, 70 years old, and Hoffman, Arlington Heights, Arlington's a little bit older, but we're all going through the same thing, to make sure everything stays up to date and strong for the future. So we're gonna be presenting that in April, and we'll be ready to go with that. The good news is, the village is still going forward. We're still hopeful for the concerts this summer, still hoping to have our community events, beautification projects, we talked previously, we're looking at work on our clock tower, Veterans Park, all that stuff is still going on. We're not gonna step back. This is the time to make sure we keep our best foot forward as we move on into the future and as the economy comes back and comes stronger. Speaking about the concerts, one bit of bad news is not COVID-related, but one of our bands for this summer's concerts, Casey and Sunshine Band, they are canceling their entire tour for this year, for 2020. So they will not be playing as originally scheduled in Elk Grove. We are working, Murray Weiner puts it together, is working with their managing, management companies, finding replacements. Right now, we still have Daughtry, still have Lover Warrior, and we still have the Beach Boys, the original Beach Boys, Mike Love, still coming. We are still optimistic that we will be having our concerts. We're optimistic we'll have a Memorial Day event, we're optimistic we're gonna have Rotary Fest, we're optimistic we're gonna have Play Party and Picnic, we're optimistic we're gonna have Oktoberfest. We're planning for these events to go on. And, you know, you hear all different things from experts on COVID, but what we keep hearing is, by Memorial Day, enough shots should be out there, enough people already would've had it and all that, that will be close to herd immunity. So our hope is, the events will go forward. So keep our fingers crossed, Chris, because Memorial Day is our first one.
I know.
So we're planning for these events to go on. So we're out there looking for another band, so we're optimistic that everything's gonna get going, and we'll be in good shape and all that. So keep our fingers crossed, everything keeps going good. And Mr. Frankie, I think, until he's swearing, that might be about it for the mayor's report.
Yeah, it was pretty good.
Pretty good?
Pretty good.
Okay. With that said, I'd like to first, if Ms. Valentine wouldn't mind, I'll hold off, I'd like to first have Chief Michael, wanna come down and, we're swearing a firefighter?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for having us here this evening, we appreciate this. We're welcoming a new firefighter/paramedic to the department this evening, and we appreciate, we never take this for granted that we're gonna be able to fill our vacancies, so we really appreciate the support from the board, the elected officials here, to fill the vacancy that we have in the fire department. So it's my pleasure this evening to introduce firefighter/paramedic Zachary Pica. Zach, will you join us, please? While Zach's making his way down here, I also want to thank Commissioner Butch Ergy, Chairman of the Police and Fire Commission, for the candidates they bring forward as always. It's a pleasure to work with the Police and Fire Commission as well, and we thank you for that. Zachary Pica grew up in Woodridge, went to Downers Grove North High School. He earned an associate's degree at the College of DuPage and a bachelor in business finance from Eastern Illinois University. He attained his paramedic license through the paramedic program at Edward Hospital in Naperville and worked for the Westmont Fire Department part-time. He then attended his firefighter academy at the College of DuPage. Zach worked for the Matson Fire Department for four years prior to getting his call for Elk Grove Village here. And in his spare times, he loves to work outdoors, travel, build and fix things, and challenge himself with new opportunities. So it's my pleasure to introduce our firefighter/paramedic Zachary Pica.
Eastern Illinois, George.
College of DuPage, I think is the Shepherd Els.
I didn't ask you that, I asked you Eastern Illinois.
I gave you the answer that I knew, and I have a blank on Eastern Illinois, I should know.
Really? I thought you knew, leather.
I thought that was southern.
No, no, that's the Luquis.
Oh, there's a little, okay. Got it.
Well, he's losing his touch.
Yeah.
Yeah? Okay. It's okay. We're okay, George.
Yeah, lawyer honor.
Read it, I state your name.
I, Zach Pica.
Have been appointed to the position of?
Have been appointed to the position of?
Firefighter.
Firefighter.
In the Village of Elk Grove Village.
In the Village of Elk Grove Village.
In the Counties of Cookin, DuPage.
In the Counties of Cookin, DuPage.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Did I support the Constitution of the United States?
Did I support the Constitution of the United States?
Constitution of the State of Illinois?
Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I will faithfully discharge?
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of?
The duties of the office of?
Firefighter.
Firefighter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, buddy.
Thank you so much, sir.
Step on. Did you self-identify?
Hello, everybody, it's very nice, nice to meet you all. I want to thank Chief Michael and pretty much everybody for setting this up so I can actually be up here and thank you in person and see everybody's faces.
Half of them.
Yeah, half of them. And that's pretty much it.
Who do you have, anybody here with you tonight?
Yes, my wife, Vicki, is over there videotaping for my parents who couldn't be here today.
Very good. So you went to Peloton High School?
I went to Downers Grove North High School.
Oh, I'm sorry, I looked at the wrong one. Downers Grove, any sports?
I wrestled.
We got wrestling mom in the audience, we're gonna swear in, we got wrestling self.
Right away.
Yeah, save time, just give you another cheek bagger and all that. So no wonder he's successful, right, George? Yeah, he is. So what made you pick, what made you want to be a fireman?
Kind of hard to say, there's a lot of reasons. My dad was a career fireman his whole life, so I was definitely kind of ran the family, it's something that I've been around pretty much my whole life, and I saw how it affected him and how it affected the lives of the people he touched, and I know I wanted to do the same thing.
We appreciate you choosing that thing, we're glad you're here in Elk Grove. And Chief, I'm sorry, I mean firefighter, we wish you well. Now, you're not cutting weight anymore, so this is for your wife.
There we go.
And this, of course, is for a wrestler.
Wow.
So you're good to go, congratulations.
Thank you so much, sir.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Very nice of you, Mayor.
Take care. Give him a hand, give him. Eileen, wanna come on down? Is that right, Eileen?
Yes.
Okay, come on down. Boy, we have wrestlers, we have wrestling moms, what more do you want?
Valentino.
Huh?
Valentino.
Valentino, right. Okay, first off, Eileen, I'm sorry, Ms. Valentino, has been appointed to the library board. As we all know, we lost our good friend, good library trustee Jim Cogan recently, and they had an opening, and I know a few people applied, and I know the board members who are here, they interviewed, and they chose Ms. Valent, Eileen, if that's okay, Eileen, to take this back. So we have here tonight, I see Gil, I see Lee, and I see, I thought I saw someone else. Joanne? And?
Director Debbie Bruce.
Oh, right there. So four, wait, where's TR?
Home with the kids.
Wow.
And isn't he the president of the board right now?
Wow.
Okay, we're gonna oust Cuomo, and we're gonna oust TR, so we're all good to go.
No chocolates for him.
With all that said, first off, thank you for volunteering for the community.
Thank you.
I'll just say a few words in a second, but we appreciate you stepping up, being part of the village, and like I say, we're very proud, so thank you. So if you can, please raise your right hand, repeat after me, I state your name.
I, Eileen Valentino.
Have been appointed to the position of?
Have been appointed to the position of Elk Grove Library Board.
Holy cow, she's eating me, she's doing me. In the Village of Elk Grove Village.
In the Village of Elk Grove Village.
In the Counties of Cookin, DuPage.
In the Counties of Cookin, DuPage.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
I support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I will faithfully discharge?
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of?
The duties of the office of.
Library trustee?
Library trustee.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, buddy.
Thank you.
The community, the community. Do you have anybody here tonight with you, any family?
I have my husband Jim here, my kids are in college, so they're not. So I would just want to thank the board very much for giving me this opportunity. So I've been a 25-year-long resident of Elk Grove and really grown to love this community very much. We've raised our family, and the community's given so much to all of us that I'm really thankful to have this opportunity to give back in some way, so thank you very, very much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor.
So how, okay, how many children do you have?
I have two, we have two.
Okay. In ages?
Well, Tony is a senior, he's 22 in college, and our daughter Tara is 19, she's at St. Mary's of Notre Dame.
Oh, okay.
And she's an athlete too, she's a skater, so she skates for the three-year skating team at Notre Dame.
Oh, very good. Is that great?
Yeah, it's awesome.
Well, we're glad that you stepped up, we're glad you're a part of the village, and we can't thank you enough, it's a lot of work, but you also get a lot of benefit because it makes Elk Grove a better town, so.
Absolutely.
I have a feeling. So before you go?
Thank you so much.
Don't give us the tone, well, he's not cutting weight, so he's okay.
Yeah, he's a heavyweight.
Yeah, so, here's some chocolates for the family.
Thank you.
And for you. Thank you for allowing her to give the time back to the community, that means a lot. It's harder sometimes on family than it is a person doing the work. So, and, again, we can't thank the library enough, you guys do a phenomenal job for this village, you make a better village because of it, and we got a great working relationship with them, we love it, and we appreciate being part of it.
Thank you so much.
Well, congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Give her a hand, thank you. Okay, if any people need to go, by all means, now's okay if you want to, you know, you can stay if you want to, but you don't have to, it's your decision. Thank you.
You want to introduce your name, Mayor?
Yes.
You can, these two.
Eastern Illinois.
Ah.
Weren't they the Leathernecks?
Western is, isn't it?
Oh, Western.
Wow.
Very good, Mr. Knickerbocker, how'd you learn that?
He looked it up.
I asked Tom to Google it, because I think he's absolutely correct.
You Googled Tom? Very, you're right, I didn't think about that, you're right, it's Western Illinois Leathernecks. Eastern is, very good. Okay, with that said, we'll give him a second to walk out. George, you have a pacemaker? You need a battery? It's a big one, it's a big one, Elizabeth. Okay, move on, trustees report, we'll start with trustee Schmidt.
No report tonight.
Trustee Prackno.
Just my usual winter report, thank you to everyone in our community who really came out and took care of shoveling those driveways and sidewalks. I'd say 99% of our sidewalks have been shoveled, which is just made walking outside so much easier and so much safer. Also, a thank you to the fire department chief, many residents have stopped me, and I've seen it myself, it's like, I was told, did you just see that fire truck? It pulled up to a fire hydrant, and a firefighter jumps out, shovels out the fire hydrant, and gets back on, and I really, that's, that's like going an extra step and an extra mile, so very, the residents are very thankful to the fire department because those were, those were heavy, heavy snows, and a lot of the snow got pushed up by the snowplow, so it was really nice that the fire department took that on themselves. And in that regard, two more issues, now that we're starting to warm up and melt, we still have an issue with drainage. If you have a street grate by your driveway or in front of your house, please, if you can, try and shovel it out because this, this ice is gonna start melting. please, if you can, try and shovel it out, because this, this ice is gonna start melting, the snow is gonna start melting, and it needs somewhere to go, it needs to be able to drain. I was out walking the dog today, and I was going through some low, low, lower-level sidewalks, they had four to five inches of water, just standing there because they had nowhere to go. So, if, if you have a drain, and you know where it's at, and you, you have a little extra energy, try and shovel your drain out. And one last note, um, with waste management, we had it on our website, I, I never trust getting the robo-call, because I don't have a house phone anymore, so, um, I went to the village website, and the information was clearly stated that, that we, we were on a holiday schedule and would be delayed a day, so, if you're ever in doubt, go to the website. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Trustee Listener.
No report.
Trustee Zarnik.
I just wanted to remind everyone, the applications for the Zarnik Heffron scholarships are on the, uh, websites, zarnikgolf.com, dot com, and on the village website, uh, as well as at the high schools with the counselors. There are eight one thousand dollar scholarships available, uh, to be given this year to Elk Grove residents who are graduating, uh, from high school this year. The applications must be received by April twenty-third, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Trustee Feiter.
In the past week, I've had two meetings with, um, the Meet Chicago Northwest Organization, which I try to explain every time, is our tourist organization that Elk Grove, Schaumburg, Arlington Heights, High Task, and several other communities are all part of, which the, these organizations, and there are several of them in the state of Illinois, are all trying to promote tourism, promote the restaurants, so the restaurants get customers, this kind of thing, and they are partially supported by the state of Illinois, and they're partially supported by the local communities. Uh, we had, um, one day, I think it was about a half an hour meeting, then the next one was about, uh, an hour and a half, going over what's going to status of, um, everything right now with the businesses. Good news is, they got this, uh, the loan, I think I mentioned at the last meeting, and with that money, they're going to rehire several people that have been furloughed out, uh, you know, from the local organization, um, that is, uh, in Schaumburg. Um, that's good news. Um, bad news, they started looking over some of the figures that, of the impact of the COVID-nineteen on, on business, they estimate, a man from the National Restaurant Association said a hundred and ten thousand restaurants were closed with this, and that may be a conservative estimate, and locally, uh, in terms of hotels, um, they were down forty-six percent in the Chicago area on hotel occupancy, and fifty-two percent, um, on their revenue, and the reason the revenue was higher than the, uh, rooms is because they had to cut prices on the rooms to try to get people in there with what was going on and how difficult things were. So, it's been really hard for the restaurants and hotels here and across the state and across the nation, and that's pretty obvious, we all know that. Um, are there any good signs? Well, we had a, a guest speaker from, um, a transportation organization, he used to work for the Chi- Chicago Tourism Board, and he told us, um, transport, uh, in terms of people taking trips, uh, airlines, things like that, it's starting to go up, the numbers are going up, uh, people are taking more and more short-term trips, or short-distance trips, and many, they estimate, will take longer distance trips, not yet foreign trips this year, although they, that means, some people might, but they, they don't expect a real boom in that until next year, but the shorter trips and the longer trips are going to be going up in numbers. Uh, something else they mentioned, um, that the city of Chicago is starting now to sign contracts with organizations that, you know, remember last year, they canceled one event after another, after another, after another, at McCormick Place and others, and now they're starting to, uh, to sign contracts with organizations that would be effective around the end of summer, that's when they expect that they will start having organized meetings and things like that in the city of Chicago, um, that's their estimate at this point, uh, so there, you know, some optimism for sure. Uh, our, our local group is seeing that, um, that we are getting an uptick in small organized meetings, signing contracts to have them at our local hotels, not big, you know, groups, but small groups, and so that's the beginning of a change. I think people are starting to get optimistic that business is gonna be better, and that will be good for all of us, we wanna see that happen, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee Frankie. Trustee Frankie.
No report.
We move on now to the accounts payable one for February twenty-third, two thousand twenty-one.
I move we accept the accounts payable warrant for February twenty-third, twenty twenty-one, in the amount of nine hundred seventy-two thousand four hundred and ninety-five dollars and fifty cents.
Second.
Motion by trustee Zarnik, second by trustee Listener, Lori, can you call the vote, please?
Trustee Feiter?
Yes.
Trustee Frankie?
Aye.
Trustee Listener?
Aye.
Trustee Prochnow?
Aye.
Trustee Schmidt?
Aye.
Trustee Zarnik?
Aye. Motion passes six to nothing. Um, move on now, um, regular agenda, we have no item, oh, I'm sorry, consider agenda. First off, consider agenda, tonight we have items A is Apple through J is Johnson, I need a motion.
Oh, well.
Second.
Motion by trustee Frankie, second by trustee Listener, any questions, comments, concerns from the items in consider agenda? Seeing none, hearing none, and without objection, recorded votes demonstrated, six to nothing. We have no items under the regular agenda tonight, uh, plan commission... My glasses. Mr. Romanoffen?
Trustee Frankie.
Thank you. Youth committee, trustee Frankie.
Uh, yes, just to mention that we have seven one thousand dollar scholarships available. If you'd like to download the app, you can go to elkgrove.org/scholarships, or just search it on our website, or else check with your high school, um, you have to be an Elk Grove resident, and please get the application in no later than May seventh, and we will notify at the end of May, first week of June, the winners. That's all I have.
Thank you. I, uh, business leaders forum, trustee Listener.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, a couple of things going on at Enclave, the two thousand and twenty-one Makers' Wine Class continues to meet weekly via Zoom on Thursday mornings from nine to ten, and they meet in person on the second Thursday of the month at Enclave, and it's going very well, it's a much larger class than, uh, last year, and the next monthly masterclass is scheduled for Wednesday, March seventeenth, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Um, cabinet television committee, trustee Listener.
Uh, thank you again, uh, today I spoke with Ross Rowe, and, um, he heads up Elk Grove TV, and Ross told me he's continuing to look into a way of possibly showing the Elk Grove TV program directory on a weekly basis as part of the, uh, Elk Grove News update that comes, airs every day between, no, not between, at two PM and six PM, uh, if any, I'm sure Ross will get this going, remember we had a, a person had our coffee several weeks ago, saying they wish they could, uh, see the, uh, directory ahead of time, and, uh, this will be, give them a way to see the programs. Channel Six does put this out, um, every month, and it's, it's useful, and it's awful, also online at the village website, but this will be another option, so we'll keep you posted on that, and that concludes my report.
Very good. Move on now to Health and Community Services, trustee Zarnik. No report. Information committee, trustee Listener.
Uh, thank you, uh, the committee will be meeting tomorrow morning at nine thirty to discuss suggested redesign of our village newsletter, I know that's hard to swallow when you consider we have such a great village newsletter, but there, we've got some suggestions already, and on the committee with me is trustee Feiter and trustee Prochnow, and, uh, I think we'll have a good meeting tomorrow, and we'll be able to report to you at our next meeting, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee Listener. Recycling Waste Committee, trustee Feiter.
Just a couple of things, we're still taking Christmas lights, if you have them, turn them into the village, and we'll recycle them, we'll be doing that until the end of March, and, uh, the community development office, if you have batteries that you are throwing away, don't throw them away, don't put them in the garbage, they do environmental harm, bring them over here to village, and they will be recycled, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee Feiter. Parade Committee, trustee Zarnik.
Mark your calendars, because our hometown parade is scheduled for Saturday, September eighteenth, twenty twenty-one, two PM, our community character coalition, coalition is the grand marshals, and our next parade meeting will be announced at a later date, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Personnel Committee, trustee Jeffrey Charles Frankie.
No report.
Would Bill have one? Uh, Judiciary Plan and Zodi Committee.
That is just so...
Trustee Prochnow.
Wrong. The JP, JPZ committee met this afternoon to discuss two issues, the first being short-term rentals within the community, we also discussed whether to allow the sale of recreational marijuana in Elk Grove Village, uh, I am working with staff right now and with the board, uh, this is an, these are both ongoing issues that have not been resolved yet, but I will be giving a report at our next board meeting, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Cabinet Improvement Committee, trustee Zarnik.
No report.
Airport update, we have our next, uh, ONCC meeting, where's, we're working on Flight Quiet, is that this week, Maggie, or next week? This week, okay, so we're still working together, hopefully get a fair rotation where everyone gets the benefit, and everyone pays a little bit of price as far as the impact goes. Midsummer concert classic series, I said before, still have Daughtry on the fourth, um, the thirteenth, uh, we're looking for a band, the twentieth, we still have Loverboy, and the twenty-seventh, we have the Beach Boys, so they're still moving forward, keeping our fingers crossed, Special Events Committee, hopefully Memorial Day, we'll be going forward, keep your fingers crossed, No Item Liquor Commission, report for village manager, anything, Mr. Romo?
No.
And I know our village clerk's gonna talk about early voting coming up.
We do have early voting, starting March twenty-second through April fifth here at Village Hall, it's the same rooms as the November election, which is rooms D and E, located at the southwest entrance of the Village Hall. The hours are posted on the website, it will be Monday through Saturday from nine AM to five PM, and Sundays from ten AM to four PM. If anybody needs assistance with finding a precinct on Election Day, feel free to reach out to the village clerk's office for assistance, we can help you, um, locate that. If you need help with registering to vote, you can contact the clerk's office too, we can help with that.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Nickerbocker, can you look? Nothing?
No.
Okay, no unfinished business? Any new business items tonight, anyone wants to bring up? Uh, just, hmm, go ahead.
Just one thing, when I was walking in this evening, uh, Bob and Helen mentioned to me that they're having problems, uh, getting Elk Grove TV on ATT U-verse, and I mentioned to Scott, who's running the Channel Six thing tonight, and he's looking into it from his, his end, so hopefully we'll have a report, but if there's anyone else on AT&T that's not seeing our meeting...
I looked at the TV schedule and tried to clue it when they said they were on, and yeah, I can get other villages.
Yeah, she's, well, she's getting other ones, but, um...
You know why, don't you?
Yeah.
We're very successful, they don't wanna, they don't wanna brag about Elk Grove. Go ahead.
Well, anyway, I just wanted to let other people know that we are looking into it, and Scott's real good at it, so we should have some sort of answer, thank you for bringing it up.
Anything else? Um, anybody in the audience? Mr. Petz, are you doing good, buddy?
Next one for Tuesday.
You missed hearing that, we're glad to have that back, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Helen, Bob, you guys, hey, have we set up my date yet on April?
Yeah, twenty-seventh of April.
Twenty-seventh, okay, that's the same day as the board meeting.
Yes. I just wanna say I have Richard Michael, who's off at the seniors' committee, he's excellent, he did a great job.
Our fire chief?
Yes.
Good. Did he bring you chocolates?
No, he brought other things, personally.
Whoa. Fire hoses and, uh, axes and...
Pansels.
Did he shovel the hydrant out in front of the teen center, or the, uh, adult center?
We always have pride in our chief. Chief, thank you for doing that today, appreciate it. Okay, but we're looking forward, so April twenty-seventh, you give me a note, Lori, so I can, thank you. Uh, okay, anything else before...
Yeah, just one thing, and it was interesting, and we were talking about recycling, and I know Pat knows a lot about what's going on, but sometimes when in doubt, call the Village Hall, I just came in today, I was cleaning out my medicine cabinet, and it's, it's been a while since I cleaned it out last, I found a mercury thermometer, I knew I didn't, shouldn't throw it in the garbage, but I had no idea, I've carried it around for two weeks in my purse, wondering what's the safe way to dispose of it, and the chief fire chief today said, we have a box right out there.
Why'd you keep using it?
You're kidding, right?
Why, is it broken?
No, it was broken, it would be dangerous.
Yeah, so it's still good.
I think I prefer my little digital.
Really?
Yeah.
You don't wanna take a chance of it getting broken, broken.
But, so, then, if you find an item in your house that you know this probably should not go into the garbage, just give us a call, and maybe we do accept it.
You know, that's a good, good question, because, uh, I just had to get a new toothbrush, and there's that lithium battery, and I, I don't know where to get rid of it, so I have to find out about that.
Bring it here.
You do take them?
No, just give it to Chris.
I'll give it to Chris.
She'll carry it on her purse a couple months, until she finds it.
Her purse glows.
Surprise.
Okay, anything else before adjourn? Uh, Tom, just so you know, we are going back to executive session, so we'll be leaving very quickly after this, so come up, talk real quick, we'll get answers for you, otherwise I'll be in tomorrow on that. Okay, nothing else? I need a motion to adjourn, so move...
Second.
Motion by trustee Listener, second by trustee Zarnik, all, or Lori, will you call the vote, please?
Trustee Frankie?
Aye.
Trustee Listener?
Aye.
Trustee Prochnow?
Aye.
Trustee Schmidt?
Aye.
Trustee Zarnik?
Aye.
Trustee Feiter?
Yes.